Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting of February 12th, 2018. Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Bonfield, would you please take the role?
I would love to. Mrs. Bradford here.
Mrs. Vice President Burton here.
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mrs. Bonfield is here and President Johnson has informed us that he is a wee bit under the weather.
He's going around. He will be absent this evening. As it is stated, Mr. President Johnson will not be with us this evening. I'm quite confident that he'll be up with us next week. It's going around and if anyone's feeling anything other than stellar, please stay home. We are having a bit of a reverberation going on here. If you're having some technical issues at home, we're in this room. I apologize. We're working on that. I welcome you to the first of two meetings of this evening. The first is our regular meeting or voting meeting, as it's commonly called. We'll be going through a number of items that have been brought before the board and have been discussed at length. For these items that we are going to be voting on this evening, you may or may not see the level of discussion that you might expect. Please understand that that's not because we take these items lightly, but rather it's because they've been discussed at at least a couple of meetings prior to this evening. Therefore, we've pretty much beat them to death at this point. So, we will have some discussion, but if you're looking for deeper discussion for items that come before the Board of Education, I encourage you to tune into our Committee of the Whole Meetings. You can either attend those meetings. You can watch them online live if you have Livonia Cable, or you can pick them up on our website the following day, usually about Tuesday noon or so. They're available on our website and they stay up there for generally several years if you'd like to tune in and catch up on any of those items. We will be having two meetings this evening. The first, as I've announced, is our regular meeting or our voting meeting. Following this meeting, we will go right into a Committee of the Whole Meeting where we will be discussing some other items in depth that are not yet ready for a vote. Livonia Public Schools places a great deal of emphasis on respect. Respect between students, respect between adults, and respect from adults to students and vice versa. That is a district-wide initiative by Livonia Public Schools and it's taken very seriously by this Board of Education. We find no better way to teach our children than to model that behavior. You have the word of the members of this Board of Education that we will treat one another and everyone who approaches this Board with respect. And in return, we ask anyone who is participating in this meeting this evening or any other time to do the same. If you would like to follow along with an agenda this evening and you're in attendance, they can be found on the table just outside the door to your right. If you are watching from home, you can find an agenda on our website and that can be found at livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to our agendas and follow along this evening. Along with our agenda, we will be having a break after item three C. We have some folks that we're going to be celebrating with this evening and honoring this evening, and we're going to take a break for just about five or 10 minutes or so after we take care of those items so that we can, so that those who are in attendance this evening can congratulate our honorees personally. It may be mentioned later in the meeting, but with the winter weather that we've been having, I don't want to risk not mentioning it later on. We, as a district and as a community, owe an enormous debt of gratitude to our Transportation Department. As each of our own homes have been hit with an onslaught of snow, so has the district. And our Transportation Department has gone above and beyond to keep our schools functioning well and ready for our students. We had a well-enjoyed snow day on Friday. I don't know of a single human being that was disappointed with that one, but we are really thrilled and really thankful for our Transportation and our Maintenance Department who have navigated the roads, who have, our Maintenance Department who have kept our parking lots clear and ready for school, and the awful lot of folks who have worked behind the scenes to take care of that and make sure that we're safe and able to have school. So, thank you very much to all those folks on Transportation and Maintenance both. We are, probably should have done this first. Next item on our agenda, I'm sorry, is our Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Bonfield, would you please lead us in the direction?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda this evening is item three, Communications, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice President Burton, members of the Board, Superintendent Oakwist. Tonight, can you hear me okay? Is this not on now?
I don't know if it's on or not. I can hear you.
Okay.
Are other people in the room picking up the mic to the voices? Nope. Not sure if my mic is working or not, but we are, as we said, having a little bit of technical difficulty.
Okay, that sounds better. I can hear it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
We're on.
Thank you. Tonight, we would like to take a few moments to recognize a special group of staff members here in LPS. Our dedicated principals continue to amaze us with their passion, their empathy, their creativity and resilience, and their obvious love for education and our schools. Our principals take the lead. They set the tone for our students and staff. They provide guidance, leadership, and professionalism in all that they do each and every day. From the principals who send weekly blogs, newsletters, some even send podcasts to their parents in order to keep them in the loop, to those principals who aren't afraid of the good old pie, cream pie in the face, or a good soaking in a dunk tank in order to keep their students motivated to meet certain challenges and strive for excellence, we salute you. Just recently, we witnessed an entire school come together to offer their enthusiastic thanks to their longtime principal who announced that he would soon make a move over to Central Office. As a final send-off, the school threw an assembly that rivaled any high school pep rally and how awesome it was to see a gymnasium filled with teenagers who were cheering for their principal, standing in line for autographs or a selfie. This speaks volumes about how our school leaders are viewed by our students, our staff, and the community. Our principals can be found walking our hallways, connecting with students, rallying our school, rallying our school spirit, cheering our teams, calming a nervous youngster, applauding a performance, or offering a listening ear. Our principals take ownership in creating learning environments in which, excuse me, in which students feel safe, connected, challenged, and cared for in our schools. Each year, our district designates an official week to recognize their efforts. It's called Principals Week, and we are kicking it off here tonight with a special resolution that will be read into the record and voted upon by the Board. At this time, I'd like to invite Board Trustee Crystal Frank and Emerson Middle School Principal Ann Owen to join me at the podium.
And before we move over to the podium, could I ask for a motion, please?
Vice President Burton.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution establishing the week of February 11th through 17th, 2018, as Principals Week in Livonia Public Schools.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And now I invite you to the podium.
Okay, come on up, ladies. Mrs. Frank will read the resolution and present the resolution to Mrs. Owen, who is co-president of the Livonia Educational Administrators Group, known to us as LEEDs. Do I have to turn it over to you? Thank you. It's my pleasure to read this resolution. Principals Week. Whereas Principals Week is dedicated to recognizing the significant contributions of Livonia Public Schools' school principals and the commitment to providing quality educational experiences and guidance for their students. And whereas energetic and inspiring school leadership is essential if schools, teachers, and support staff are to implement college and career-ready standards and assessments. And whereas school principals play a vital role in the success of students and act as the liaison between the school and the community it serves. And whereas we join with educators, parents, and students to raise awareness of the importance of educational leadership. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the trustees of the Livonia Public School Board of Education recognize the week of February 11th through the 17th, 2018, as School Principals Week, and encourage all citizens to thank and support the efforts of school principals in our community.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for all that you do.
On behalf of all of the LEEDs members who are principals, assistant principals, coordinators in the district, I want to thank. I am only one of many who really is on duty, what I would say, 24/7. Very much, it is a passionate kind of a job that we all hold where we are taking care of students way beyond the normal boundaries of a day. And I have to say, the most wonderful thing that you see many of my colleagues, all of my colleagues doing, is they seek to care for every child that walks through that door as their own student, as they would take care of their own personal child. And for that, I am very eternally grateful that I have such wonderful and esteemed colleagues. Thank you.
So, if we're out and about in the schools this week, be sure to give your principal a high five, a handshake, a hug, if you will, to thank them for all of their efforts during this special week of recognition.
Thank you. Are there comments from our superintendent nor members of the Board? Mrs. Oakwist?
Thank you. Just certainly, Mrs. Jenkins captured many of the things that make our school leaders so vital. They play such a pivotal and important role each and every day in our district and in our school community. It truly is a job that is a labor of love. And I had the privilege of doing that for many, many years, and I will tell you, we have truly the finest school leaders in this district. They impact, they inspire, they influence on a daily basis their students, their parents, their school community, their staff. And we are, we are very, very grateful for their efforts each and every day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Comments from other Board members? Mr. Centers?
I just want to say that that is enormously difficult job. We know how hard it is in the classroom, and being a principal brings a whole different set of challenges. And it's, it's really, I think, can be a challenge in a lot of ways. And, but I see our building principals really rise to every new challenge, new opportunity, and do a really great job. So, definitely proud of the people we have here in Livonia, and we're, we're very grateful for the leadership they provide, for sure.
Thank you. Mrs. Frank?
Thank you. It was my pleasure to present that. And I also want to say, these principals, there are many of them in our audience today who I think do a phenomenal job for our district. And they're also the face of our district to parents, to community members. They don't see us as often or the administration, but they see the principals at the building. And these people have passion, amazing passion for what they do. And so, I just want to say thank you. And I also just want to do a little shout-out to Mrs. Boca, Mrs. Kuzno, and to Mr. Stromberg. Those are principals that I see on a daily base, not a daily basis, but a weekly basis. I'm in and out of these buildings a lot. And they're, the breadth of what they do on a daily basis, from just what was mentioned earlier, they just do a ton of things. I just dropped one of my children off at homes, and Mr. Stromberg was still there at six o'clock in the evening. So, you guys dedicate so much time and your hearts to our schools. And so, I just want to say a personal thank you to all that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from other Board members? The one thing that I think of immediately when I think of the role of a principal is that that individual sets the tone for the building. And knowing that our students have to feel safe and in a warm and caring environment starts with our principal. And the fact that that individual is integral, rather, to our community feeling welcomed in that building. They are so very important. When I, when I think of principal, I think of tone first. And I want to thank the folks that hold many of those positions in Livonia Public Schools. They are of such vital importance. And you are the first line of that warmth and that tone for our community. So, we thank you. Other comments from other Board members?
Seeing them, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Frank?
Support.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Vice President Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is item three B, LPS Points of Pride, Nijiro Japanese Immersion Elementary School. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you, Vice President Burton. Tonight, we continue with our standing item on our agenda. We call Points of Pride. As you recall, the Points of Pride program allows us to set aside a few moments during our regular meeting to highlight a specific program or offering in our district. In doing so, we are not only informing the public about our programs, but we are able to hear firsthand from staff, students, and parents about the impact the program has on them. Tonight, we're featuring our little school that could. I just, when I think of Nijiro, and its constant growth and its constant chugging along, that's what came to mind to me today as I was putting this together. The growing and thriving Nijiro Japanese Immersion Elementary School. I would like to invite Nijiro Lead Administrator, Mr. Lawrence DeLuca, to join me at the podium. Doesn't have very far to go, to travel. Mr. DeLuca has brought some special friends along to help tell the special story of this very treasured offering in our district. And I'm going to fire up the screen again there, hopefully. Oh, there we go.
Skip that.
Okay, take it away.
Thank you, thank you, Stacey.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Vice President Burton, Superintendent Oakwist, members of the Board and Central Office. Thank you. Before I start, actually, I want to echo what Ms. Owen said, her comment about the colleagues that the principals have here. This is, you know, my first year in Livonia Public Schools, and I just feel so blessed. I really, it's been much more than I could have expected. And I love, I love the school. I love the parents and the students, but they're such a great support team here. And coming in new, you know, my new friend, Bill Green's out there, too. He's, it's amazing. I just, anything comes up, I have a question, I can reach out to any of them. And also, the Central Office, too, in particular, Cindy and Teresa over there, just, and Keith and everyone, I mean Jen, everyone there. But they're just so helpful. Like, it's been, it's been amazing. I really couldn't be happier to be a part of LPS. I'm really, I feel really very blessed to be up here. But now, on to Nijiro. So, just up the street on Curtis Road is this unassuming little school beside. But when you get up there and you walk inside the doors, you find it's not like any other school, really. In fact, we're one of only four programs like it in the US. There's, there's a similar one outside Chicago in Schaumburg, and one in Portland and Atlanta. But in a sense, we're actually really one of a kind. I'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. But we are, you know, we are a dual immersion program, so half of the class is in English, half in Japanese. Right now, we serve grades, kindergarten through fifth grade. Very excited that next year, we're going to add sixth grade. This is something that the parents have been talking about for quite some time. And we did a survey, and the vast majority of them do want to stay. So, we're very excited to offer that for our students next year. That was, that was met with a lot of, a lot of praise from everyone. Just so you know, too, so we do offer, you know, again, K through five right now, six next year. Students coming in, if they come in after kindergarten, they do have to take a proficiency test. So, in kindergarten, since it's really, you know, technically, they don't have to necessarily have much language at that point, we basically can take anyone at any level, at the kindergarten level. But after kindergarten, starting at first grade, they have to take a proficiency test. So, we do have some students that are interested in coming, to hear about our school. And some of them will, they'll study, they'll, they'll get a tutor, or they have some Japanese heritage that maybe helps them. So, we typically get a lot of kids in kindergarten, but throughout the year, we're also getting kids as well. We effectively, just literally last week, we had two students who were American, but had spent some time in Japan. They just entered third and fifth grade. So, the school is really expanding. But I was going to talk about how we're a little bit different than every other school, really. So, we combine the Common Core state standards, the Michigan grade-level expectations, as well as Japanese standards. And this is how we're really, we separate ourselves, even from that school, the schools in Chicago, Portland, and Atlanta. We're literally, as far as I can tell, because I've done a lot of research, and I've talked to schools over there, we're the only school, really, that's offering this Japanese curriculum on top of the Common Core standards. So, we have, we use the Japanese Sentu math, which is essentially the curriculum of Japan that we have translated for our students here, which is actually frankly, a little bit, a little more challenging than, it tends to have concepts that are about a year ahead of everyday math in general. And also, for our really exceptional Japanese students, we offer Kokogo, which is the Japanese Language Arts, essentially. And so, this is, if you were in Japan, this is the course that you would take if you were a student there. And none of those other schools offer that. There are, like, the Saturday School offers that. That's, you know, Pace School. We're the only public school that really offers this for our students. So, the students that come here, particularly ones from Japan, or that have some Japanese ancestry, are able to keep pace, you know, with students that are, that are over in Japan. And as I said before, they spend half the day in English, half the day in Japanese. So, it's, what's very typical is on Monday, they might have math in Japanese, and then Tuesday, they have math in English. And then Wednesday, they have in Japanese and English, and so on and so forth. And the same goes with social studies, the same goes with science. So, it varies every, every day. And for the most part, you know, the classes are mixed. And so, the kids, what's great is the Japanese students are helping the English students learn Japanese and then vice versa. We are, as you know, a school of choice, and we represent 21 different school districts in the area. And we actually, the most common districts, we pull from our Novi, Livonia, Farmington, Plymouth Canton, Wald Lake, Redford. What's really, what's great about this, too, is we actually are now hearing from professionals in Japan, from, you know, major corporations that are moving to the United States for work. And literally, we're having people being asked to be transitioned to Livonia. They're choosing Livonia over New York, over San Francisco, over Los Angeles, because they've heard about this school. And I was just talking with Andrew about this the other day. We have a family coming, and actually, later, they're coming in about two weeks. And this man really made a huge thing. Like, he literally moved his whole family from Japan to come to Livonia to go to our school. And so, we're seeing this trend here of people that, because we have this program like no other. So, it's really great. It's these families, if they're here for maybe three years or something like that, they can come here and their children can still, still speak Japanese and learn English at the same time and be a part of that culture. And what's also great about this, too, is our population has doubled over the past three years. And as you probably know, there's a growing trend, frankly, not just in Michigan, but across the nation, where most, most populations of schools are declining. And we're actually, we're growing very rapidly. And literally, I was just talking, Alison, about this, just applying for a grant, and I was filling out the information. And three years ago, we were 147, and now we're at, I think we're 254. I mean, it fluctuates a little bit, but literally, three years doubled, basically. Not, you know, not quite, but pretty close to that. And what's also great is that we combine the two cultures. So, we really try and do our best to have both American culture and Japanese culture in the school. And I have a couple of clips of some of the celebrations that we have through the year. What I really like about this, too, is that we celebrate the Japanese traditions, but we also have the American ones. And in fact, I've been reading all of the newsletters that our parents, or, sorry, that our teachers are sending out. And what's great about February was, a lot of them would say, okay, so this month, we have some great celebrations coming up. We have Setsubun, which is, we just celebrated about a week ago, where, and I don't know if anyone follows on Twitter, you can see this, where an ogre or a goblin, and then the oni comes in, and kind of comes through, and children throw soybeans at him to kind of get rid of the evil spirits. I got to dress up as the, as the goblin as well. We saw that. And so, the kids got to throw paper at me and as I ran through, as I ran through. And then, this week now, we have Valentine's. So, what's, to me, what's great is that they're getting this Japanese tradition, they're also getting American tradition, they're getting a Valentine's Day as well. This is, and I'm glad that, in a second, I'll introduce Mewa Ainsworth, who came here, because she's one of our very involved parents. So, the beginning of the year, we have Unuka, which is this Japanese sports day. And it is a really huge celebration. And you can kind of tell from the pictures, maybe not great, but that, there are, I mean, hundreds of people on the sides watching this. It's, it's not quite like we would have a field day. It's a little more involved than that. Every, every student gets, obviously gets to take, take part in these, in these different games throughout the day. And you can see some pictures here. I don't know if the cursor will come up here, but like, here they are. You can see there's a student here who's, they're like kind of running races in this cover box and going back and forth. And they have some running races, things like that. We have these great parents. You can see there's a parent here who has a basket on his back as kids are trying to throw in these little balls in there as he's running around. And then, this is wonderful, too. We have students that they'd find, they'd have to, what does this say? It says diaper bag, right? Diapers? So, the student has to find- find someone that has diapers, and then over here, and then, and then has to bring that person across the edge. So the parents, the families are very involved with this as well. Later in the year, we had this, a big event at our school, was the Fall Festival Akamatsuuri. And they have carnival games all throughout the school. And again, we have these awesome parents. Our parents are so incredibly dedicated. They literally, for weeks, were coming in, they're constructing these games, they're building things, they're meeting, they're spending hours of their time, they're giving up to do these things, to run these events, like, you know, somewhat like you would see in Japan, so that our students can, can see this. And you can see, kids are wearing, you know, traditional garments, you know, American and, and Japanese students. And, and then also, the, the students all made floats, which is, again, traditional. So they build the floats as a class, and then parade them around after school. I have a quick little video just on our Twitter page to show you, just, just to get a little feel of it. And so again, each group would go around, and, and they build the floats, you know, as a class. I'll probably say this again, but I invite you to go to our Twitter page if you haven't, because I'm relatively active on there. And this is, I have to include this, too. We just had mochi suki, which was just the end of, of January. And this is really a celebration of the new year, when mochi is the sweet rice, and suki means to pound. So you're pounding the sweet rice, and, and then they put different, different kinds of seasonings on it, and you eat them. And what was great, was so every class got to come in, and there's this large mortar and pestle, and they'll get to have a turn in this. But I thought this would be great, because I have a nice little video of our superintendent who turned.
Oh, my. It was harder than you.
I know. It's a little awkward. It's, it's not so easy.
Okay, put in your disclaimer.
Thank you, Andrew, for being so supportive of the school. So, and again, so, you know, these are things that we do, you know, somewhat regularly. So really, you know, the school very much feels like a home. It's very, very common to, you know, we have lots of parents volunteering all the time. You know, I was actually talking to another principal about, you know, she was asking, how do you get, you know, parents involved? It's like, our parents, they want to come, you know, they, they are there all the time. And so, we've been talking a lot about this in our principal meetings, too, about the, the importance of engaging families. And I think our engagement is incredibly high at this school. So it's, it's just, it's a wonderful place to work. And if you haven't, I know a lot of you have been to this school, but if you haven't, I really invite you to come anytime. Just, you know, give me a call, whatever, I'm happy to give you a tour, because it's, it's really like no, no place else you'd ever see. I did want to talk a little bit, too, just about, just kind of more widely, some of the benefits of, you know, of immersion education. And then, these are, you know, there's lots of research to, to back this up. But essentially, you know, it enriches cognitive development. They've actually found, like, people who study other languages, less likely to have Alzheimer's, things like that. Leads to greater achievement in tests. Typically, students in immersion schools or that learn their languages do better on tests. They develop different ways of thinking. And again, obviously, too, the sense of humanity and friendships across culture, it certainly makes you more aware of other cultures, having, and being a part of that. And, and, you know, being able to adapt. Also, oh, sorry, I didn't get the next one. Oh, that one didn't catch up, okay. So yes, and obviously improves the benefits of, of language, be more flexible in thinking, and certainly opens the door for other cultures, and, and really, for career opportunities. You know, certainly, I'm sure you all know, the benefit of you can speak another language, how much more valued you are at, you know, whether it's a corporation, or whatever kind of profession you go into, always looking for people that speak other languages, that know other cultures. So it's certainly a huge benefit as well. So before we kind of wrap up here, I did want to introduce, I did bring a few friends with me here. I'd like to introduce Mewa Ainsworth, and she's on our PTA. She's incredibly involved. She basically, all the, all the fun stuff I showed you with the festival, she's the one that spearheads all of that. I'm frankly amazed at how she puts it all together. So much goes into it, and she takes care of all of it, organizing, and then the volunteers and all that stuff. So all those events, she's, she's wonderful at that. And her two daughters here, as well, Monet, who's in, in fifth grade, Amelia in first grade. And I'd like to invite them up to say a few words about the school, and then certainly take any questions you might have.
Welcome.
I prepared this statement, because I'll be pretty nervous. Good evening. My name is Mewa Ainsworth. I'm a mother of two daughters, fifth grade and first grade, who are attending Nijiro Elementary School. We live outside Livonia District, but my husband and I are committed to sending our children to Nijiro for a better and unique education. I was born and raised in Japan, and decided to come to the US to advance my education. And my job brought me to Michigan 15 years ago. I was delighted to learn that Michigan was more culturally diverse and accepting than where I've lived before. But I never imagined that one day, my children would be attending a truly unique school, and a few programs exist in the US, public Japanese immersion school. My husband is American, and at home, we speak both Japanese and English as our primary languages. Even though my daughters are heritage language learners, the immersion program at Nijiro has given them a chance to learn not just Japanese as a language, but also the content and materials in Japanese taught by dedicated Japanese teachers who know and understand the subtleness of Japanese culture, discipline, and language. What I like about Nijiro is that students are learning the importance and benefits of diversity in everyday life by interacting each other. American teachers and staff are very understanding and patient with non-English native speaking students and parents, and vice versa for Japanese teachers. So we all feel safe and secured when everything is so unfamiliar. At Nijiro, there are many Japanese and American cultural events throughout the year. I've been a chair of school events for a couple of years now, and it's nice to see a lot of volunteers. Usually, more than 40 parents show up to help at each event. And many American and Japanese parents work together very well. What I like about Nijiro's Japanese program is that it accommodates from beginners to native-level speakers. From what I observed, there are three levels at Nijiro. Native language learners, who live here for a couple of years and go back to Japan. Heritage language learners, who permanently live in the US and have Japanese-speaking family or relatives. Foreign language learners, who don't have Japanese background or relatives. These three sets of families have different goals and expectations for their children, and I feel that the Nijiro program fits a lot of families' needs. For example, native language learners need to keep their Japanese level, so that they can immerse back without a huge gap when they go back to Japan. And these students are more challenged than other sets of students at Nijiro. For heritage learners, language learners, speaking may come more naturally, but they need to spend a lot of time to learning in writing and reading, to be at or close to native language learners' level. So Nijiro program sets an appropriate bar for these students. Foreign language learners are given a rare and excellent opportunity to learn second language in such a rich environment without sacrificing English learning. And I'm sure they will take this learning opportunities to the next level when they leave Nijiro. I am proud that my fifth-grade daughter can read Japanese books at her level. For Japanese classes that are geared toward Japanese native and heritage language learners, classes' expectations and levels are set to be comparable to classes in Japan. And to be honest, it was very frustrating at times for both my daughter and me, but I'm glad the teachers have been challenging her over the years. She wouldn't be where she is now without the Nijiro's program. Overall, I consider myself and my family fortunate to live near this community, where the district invests in children's education to celebrate the diversity of the culture, to provide such a unique opportunity to future generations. I can't thank enough to Livonia Public School District for the resources you have provided since the establishment of Nijiro, and I'm looking forward to many more years of advancement at Nijiro. Thank you.
Good morning. I am a fifth-grade student from Nijiro. My name is Monet. I have lots of friends, American and Japanese. My dad is American, and my mom is Japanese. I am a Kokugo student, and Kokugo is a native-level Japanese class. I'm a Kokugo student, and sometimes there are questions that I don't understand. And if I walk over to my Japanese teacher, or sometimes a Japanese friend, they help me understand these questions. The teachers are super nice and are understanding when target language students don't really understand the question. At Nijiro, we learn math, science, and social studies in English and Japanese. It makes it better for all of us, because the students going back to Japan can keep up with their studies while also learning math a little different way. The American students can learn what other students are at different schools, while also having the chance to learn Japanese and the Japanese culture. Once in a while, my family goes to visit Japan. And if I hadn't been coming to Nijiro, I wouldn't be able to communicate with my cousins, aunts, uncles, my grandpa, and grandma in Japan. I wouldn't be able to read Japanese books. I wouldn't be able to watch Japanese TV. And I wouldn't be able to go to Japanese stores and shops. Even though it is 30 minutes away from our house, and in the winter, about 45 minutes away, I'm very glad we have this great Japanese immersion school.
So lastly, just wanted to say, obviously, oh, one thing I just thought myself, I think I misspoke earlier. The population was 127 before. That's how we doubled, 147. But I do encourage you to please, if you're on Twitter, please follow us. I post probably at least three, four times a week, and it'll really give you a good feel for the school. I try to just, you know, anything fun that we're doing at school, or projects and that, that's a really good way to kind of get a sense of what's going on. But I certainly want to offer up any, any questions about the school or the program.
Other questions or comments from the superintendent or the Board?
Wonderful.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, Mrs. Jarvis?
I'd just like to say that last year, Nijiro was visited by the president of the National PTA. And she was so impressed. She's still talking about it. She loved it. She's gone around the country, discussing this program and talking about how wonderful it is. So I know that word is getting around. I think it's a fabulous program. I happen to know a couple of students in the program. They were out shopping one day at the mall, and ran into a Japanese native, and they were able to talk with this woman. She said, oh, are you from Japan? And they said, no. And she was astonished, because they spoke fluently, and they had no accent. Young children, learning so well. Kudos to the whole program. We're just so delighted with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from, Mrs. Aquus?
Well, we are so tremendously proud of Nijiro. So thank you, Mr. DeLuca, for being here this evening. Thank you so much for sharing, from a parent perspective, and certainly from a student perspective, the impact your experience at Nijiro has had on you individually and on your family. I think one of the most impactful things we hear from families is when children go back to visit grandparents or extended family, the fact that, just as you shared, they're able to converse and communicate seamlessly with their family has been such a tremendous blessing for, for families, as both here in America and in Japan. The growth of the school has been tremendous in just a few short years. I'd like to acknowledge all of the staff who've contributed so greatly toward that. I know we have a team there that works, that works tirelessly to meet the needs of all of our learners, as you've outlined. And, and the celebrations are tremendous. I do encourage you to, if you've not had an opportunity to participate, it really is a celebration of cultures of both American traditions and Japanese traditions. And our children are so enriched by that. And truly, the parent involvement and the parent engagement is off the charts. So we are, we are very grateful for that. So kudos. Keep doing the wonderful job you're doing.
Thank you. And just one, one more thing, too, just the open enrollment does open April 20, April 25. So if anyone's interested, that, you know, come, stop by the school, take a tour, give you the information. Happy to take you around and, and give you a registration form, too.
Thank you. Comments for other Board members?
Like, like all programs that, that begin, there have been enormous amounts of, of growth going on with Nijiro, and a lot of bumps along the way that we would be remiss if we did not thank our administrative staff, our other teachers, as you said, the, the other principals in the districts, who you're able to bounce ideas off of, and other teaching staff that has been so supportive. Also, Mr. Ted Delphia, and our former superintendent, Dr. Randy Leopha, who were instrumental in, in getting this program off the ground, when, when a lot of the folks did not think that it could happen. But now that it has really taken hold, the growth is, is just amazing. But thank you to the staff at Nijiro, and to the support staff throughout Livonia Public Schools, that helps make this wonderful program thrive so well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
At this point, we're on Items 3C, District Update from the Superintendent. And after that, we will have a short break.
Thank you, Vice President Burton. I will echo your thanks to our bus drivers, our maintenance operations, and grounds crew staff from LPS, who worked very long hours, did a tremendous job this past week, in very challenging weather circumstances. We are grateful for the team that we have in place. They really worked, they worked through the night on Friday and into Saturday, and then again, out for another 12 hours yesterday. So they did a tremendous job, and our drivers have just, have really, have really come through, both on the roads and in our lots. And, and we are grateful for all of their efforts, as well as those of our building supervisors at each of the schools, who were also in yesterday, getting things ready to go today. I'd like to begin with a very significant academic accomplishment for three of our Livonia Public School students. We had three students from Churchill High School make it into the top 100 students in the state in the Michigan Prize Mathematics Competition. This is an extremely rigorous competition, and very, very difficult to achieve this accomplishment. I'd like to recognize Yejuan Revan, Pran Hav, Sundara Rajan, and Christopher Jarvis, whose mother is just down the table from us at this meeting. These three students have really reached the pinnacle of an academic accomplishment. We congratulate them, and hope they enjoy the well-deserved recognition they will receive at an upcoming banquet in March. As we've shared recently, the Western Wayne Skill Center program has moved into Garfield Community School. You may have seen an article in the paper, online today. I don't know if it'll be in the paper this week, Mrs. Jenkins?
Hopefully.
Okay. And so as they've moved in, and we've had so many people contribute to the success of that, one of the things that shifted as they moved into the Garfield Community School is that they had to find a new location to host their very exciting basketball games and tournaments. And so I'd like to thank Stevenson High School and Churchill High School for being the two most recent hosts for our, our Sharks, who had two extremely exciting games. I'd like to acknowledge the students who participated in that, both the players and the cheerleaders, and thank both of those high schools for hosting our students from the Western Wayne Skill Center, our staff, and also for the student bodies at those schools for cheering on our Sharks as they competed in those events. I believe we have one more scheduled at Frost Middle School. Is that correct? And so we are looking forward to that. A few other athletic accomplishments. Our Franklin Palm Team recently placed second in Division One State Competition. We congratulate them on that huge accomplishment. We had Franklin High School District Wrestling Team won Team Districts, and will soon compete in upcoming Team Regionals. We had two, one wrestler from Stevenson, three from Churchill, and eight from Franklin, who will also be moving on to individual regional competition. As you know, we've been privileged the past few years to have state championship wrestlers at this podium. So we hope to do that again in the near future. Stevenson Hockey are the district champs of KLA Black, and will be competing in the KLAA Conference Championship this Friday against Heartland. As we shared last month, kindergarten registration has opened at our K4 schools, and we have been been busy, which we love to see. As you know, we are hosting a Saturday Registration Day on February 24th, which is something new, as a convenience to our families. If you can believe it, it has been so popular, we have just about all of our appointments filled in online already, but we will be working to do our very best to take walk-in registrations as well. And remember, you don't have to make it that day, you can make it any day at your home K-4 school during the school day. All of the documents and information that you'll need will be available on the website, and that will help facilitate your registration. I'd like to acknowledge from Stevenson, we had some vocal music accomplishments shared with us. We had Emily Deimers and Catherine Miller have been accepted into the Michigan Youth Arts Festival All-State Honors Choir. It's the most exclusive choir in Michigan School Vocal Music Association's Honor Choir Program. In this, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday prior, over 40 of Stevenson's vocalists participated in the district solo and ensemble festival, and all 17 events gave medal-worthy performances, and 16 of those events qualified to move on to the state solo and ensemble festival, which I believe is in March. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. We also had a number of musicians also participate from Stevenson. Out of 48 events representing Stevenson, 34 events received ones, and 13 received twos. Of the 34 events receiving ones, 13 events received all As. Events receiving a one qualify to compete in the state solo and ensemble festival, yes, it is actually on St. Patrick's Day, at South Lion High School, Saturday, March 17th. So we would like to congratulate all of our dedicated and talented musicians, and we celebrate their accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to take a brief recess, about five, 10 minutes or so, so those of us who are in the audience can congratulate our honorees of the evening. We are now at recess.
Good evening. Welcome to the continuation of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education General Meeting, or Regular Meeting of February 12, 2018. We are on to item 3D on our agenda at this time, written communications. Do any board members have written communications that they'd like to share with the board? Seeing none, we are on to item 3E, Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips. Is there any member of the audience who would like to participate in Audience Communications at this time? Seeing none, we are going to go to the next item on our agenda, 3F, Response to Prior Audience Communications. At our last general meeting, or regular meeting, we had a gentleman who approached the Board of Education with a concern regarding transportation, just so that the public is aware that is being followed up, and I believe there is a meeting scheduled at this time. The next item on our agenda is item 4, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items, as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of January 22, 2018. 5B, minutes of the special meeting of January 22, 2018. 5C, minutes of the special meeting of January 29, 2018. 5D, minutes of the closed session of January 29, 2018. 5E, minutes of the special meeting of February 5, 2018.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Vice President Burton?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is item 6, Business Matters, and 6A is Approval of Bid Results for Abatement Projects 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to award the contract for abatement at Webster Elementary, Jackson Early Childhood Center, and the Livonia Career Technical Center to Global Green Service Group, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, for a total cost of $466,060, plus $56,000 in project contingency, for a total of $522,060, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Oakley? I understand you're going to be taking care of this item for us.
Yes, I am. Business matters are also my thing, and so we are happy to pinch-hit for Mr. Francis this evening. So, I will be covering these items, and we also have Mr. Scott Smith here from Plant Moran Cressa, as a extraordinarily capable backup. So, we would like to recommend Global Green Service Group as the recommended bidder for the asbestos abatement projects at Webster, Jackson, and LCTC. As you know, Global Green was the lowest-qualified bidder, and we reviewed those bid results of the most recent study session, I'm sorry, the most recent committee of the whole meeting. This group has a history of working with the district, most recently at Churchill High School, and the bond team has been satisfied with their work, and upon interview with them, are capable, feel that they are capable of completing the work in the timeline we've established within the district. The total project costs are anticipated to be approximately $217,000 under budget. Is there anything, Mr. Smith, you'd like to add to that?
None at this time, unless there are other questions.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Centers.
So, we originally budgeted $300,000 for the Webster abatement, and we ended up coming in at about $147,000. Can you explain, are we doing less scope, or is the pricing better? What's the difference there?
I don't have any specifics, other than that was, what it was, it was a combined bid for all schools, and we requested that they provide a breakdown by school, as depicted here. That was a budget established early on from our environmental consultant, Arch Environmental. You know, we've reviewed the scope with them, they've reviewed the scope again with the contractor, they feel that they've met all the requirements as defined in the request. Other than that, I don't have any other specifics. We did originally anticipate it to be a little higher, just based on, you know, looking at Coolidge from a few years back. But in talking with Mr. Lau and some others, Webster may have had some more abatement work done over the years, per se, than Coolidge itself.
So, a little bit of a combination of both, it sounds like?
We believe so.
Yeah, okay, great.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, and we are going into a series of items that, as we mentioned earlier, have been discussed at length in previous meetings, so there may not be as much discussion tonight. No other comments or questions from the board? All righty. Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Vice President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item 6B, Approval of Change Order for Security Projects 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Burton.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to appoint Security Designs as the security firm for the summer 2018 projects at Jackson Early Childhood Center, Buchanan Elementary, Webster Elementary, and the Livonia Career Technical Center for a cost of $65,020, plus $13,000 in project contingency costs, for a total cost of $78,020, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education.
Support.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Oakley?
Thank you. As you know, Security Designs has been the security firm for the district since the bond work began in 2013, 14. They continue to be recommended by our bond team because of their ongoing work performance, and we once again recommend re-engaging security design via the change order process to be the security firm for the 2018 bond projects at Buchanan, Webster, Jackson, and LCTC.
Other questions or comments from members of the board? Just for clarification for the public, what we are doing with this change order is extending their work an additional year to cover these additional schools. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Vice President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item 6C, Approval of Change Order for Commissioning Services 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Burton.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation of the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to appoint Selinger Associates as commissioning agents for the summer 2018 projects at Jackson Early Childhood Center, Buchanan Elementary, Webster Elementary, and the Livonia Career Technical Center for a cost of $45,500, plus $4,550 in project contingency, for a total cost of $50,050, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Oakley?
Thank you. Selinger Associates have been our commissioning agent for the district, again, since the bond work began in Phase 1. They continue to be recommended by our bond team because of their ongoing work performance. Last week, we reviewed the scope of their work at our Committee of the Whole meeting, which the commission systems would include HVAC and controls, domestic hot water, lighting in day, lighting controls, and emergency generators. The team again recommends re-engaging Selinger and Associates, again, via the change order The team, again, recommends re-engaging Selinger and Associates, again, via the change order process, to extend their contract for an additional year to be our commissioning agent for the 2018 bond projects at Buchanan, Webster, Jackson, and LCTC. These projects are estimated to come under budget by approximately $5,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments from members of the Board of Education? Mr. Centers?
So, if someone's watching this evening, then they're not familiar with what the commissioning agent does, they're not installing the systems, but instead, you can explain.
Testing those systems, I'll certainly defer to Mr. Smith, but testing those new HVAC systems and controls that we install in each of the locations.
Am I correct that they do help with the planning with those systems, too?
They do. They're involved in the process, starting at the beginning of the phase of the architect's work and engineering, and they will assist us through that process, and also oversee while that work is being done, and then come in and do the final testing prior to the startup of school. And then, I believe, come back again at the 10-month and 20-month mark, is that correct?
Yeah, approximately, yep. Again, with the two-year warranties, we want to bring them back through, make sure things are in order, and then if deficiencies are found, get them corrected so that they can be remedied under the contractual warranties.
Within the two-year warranty.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Vice President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item 7, Personnel Matters, and 7A is Teachers for Approval. I move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2017-18 school year for the teachers listed on the attached document. We have a motion by myself, Colleen Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs., let me see here, Mr. Archibald, will you be addressing this item?
I will. Thank you, Mrs. Burton. These teachers have been interviewed, along with many other applicants, for vacancies that existed in our instructional program. We believe that the individuals listed are the most qualified for the position indicated, and recommend that they be approved for employment.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from members of the board? Mr. Archibald, the employment of these teachers falls within the already-approved budget for the school year, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, welcome to Livonia Public Schools. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
Vice President Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bonnefield says yes.
Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item 7, Resignation. This does not require a vote by the Board of Education, it's for informational purposes only. Item 7C is Retirement. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Cindy Palto and Carla Robel.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, Mrs. Burton, tonight, we bring before you the names of two employees who will be retiring. These individuals leave with a combined 27 years of service to the district. On behalf of the district, I would like to thank these individuals for their years of dedicated service to the students of Livonia Public Schools, and ask that the board adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation in their honor.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the superintendent or the board?
Happy retirement.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you, and welcome to the next chapter of your lives. The next item on our -- oh, I'm so sorry. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. And Vice President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. We almost didn't let you retire. Now, we're on to the next item on our agenda, item 8, Hearing from Board Members. Item 8A is First Reading of Board Policies, HA and HB, Negotiations, Removal of Policies, JGCA, Physical Examinations for Athletic Participation, and JGFF, Driving and Parking. These are first readings of board policy, proposed changes. They do not require a vote at this time, however, we will hear from Mr. Archibald on an overview of policies.
Yes, thank you again, President Burton. Again, the Board of Education Policies, HA and HB, each contain an index of former policies that were deleted from the policy manual in June of 1988. And Policy HA and Policy HB initially served as a reference which redirected individuals to the appropriate collective bargaining agreement in which the desired information could be found. Again, these policies are nearly 30 years old, they have served their purpose, and may be deleted.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the board on these two policies? These will be up for a vote for removal at our next voting meeting. The next policy is Policy JGCA, and I believe, Mr. Willen, is it Mr. Willenborg?
Yes.
Hello.
Hello, and thank you, Vice President Burton. Although this is titled "First Reading," this is actually the third time we've had a public discussion regarding rewrite of Policy JGCA, Rename Physical Examinations for Athletic Participation. The policy's overall intent is to keep the health of our students paramount, and to keep our district in proper alignment with the rules established by the Michigan High School Athletic Association. Policy has been updated to include tryouts as an event that we would require a physical beforehand, and the use of an LPS-approved physical form. Policy reflects acceptable procedures, it's supported by our athletic directors, and has been reviewed and approved by our district attorney. I offer for your continued consideration, Policy JGCA, Physical Examinations Before Athletic Participation.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions by the superintendent or members of the board? Mrs. Bonnefield?
I just, I said this at the Committee of the Whole, but I'd like to just reiterate it, in case we have a larger viewing audience. Thank you so much to the central office staff on their diligent work on making sure that this policy is appropriate and meets all the standards, and is very, works along with the policies in other districts, so that we have everything all covered, but thank you so much, you've been very diligent.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will put this forward for a vote at our next voting meeting. Board policy changes, for those who may not be aware, require first and second reading before a vote can be taken. The next policy for first reading is JGFF, Driving and Parking, and we will hear from Mr. Willenborg.
And again, thank you, Vice President Burton. I bring forward for your additional review, a rewrite of Policy JGFF, Rename Driving and Parking. Its key concepts remind one and all that driving and parking is a privilege and responsibility, that vehicles must be registered and insured, and that drivers must be licensed. Policy also directs school administrators to develop rules and regulations that promote safe driving. It reminds students and parents that vehicles are subject to search by school or law enforcement officials. School administrators will also make prudent efforts to maximize student parking on campus, and fees may be assessed by the school administration. I offer for your continued consideration, Policy JGFF, Rename Driving and Parking.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from the superintendent or the board? This is not really a change in policy of Livonia Public Schools, but rather making sure that our policy language is cleaned up to reflect practices that are currently going on. This likewise will also be put forth for a vote at our next voting meeting. Thank you, Mr. Willenborg.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item 8B, Second Reading of Board Policy, KC, Board Community Relations. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy KC, Board Community Relations.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Oakley, would you want to address this item?
Thank you, Vice President Burton. As you know, our Board of Education values the opportunity to keep our community regularly informed with regard to all aspects of our school district. This policy was recently updated, Board Policy KC, to reflect some updated wording. The intent of the policy remains the same, that the board shall continually and regularly inform the community of the objectives, achievements, and condition of the school district. Importantly, the Board of Education shall promote public confidence in the school district, and then there are bulleted items that indicate that board members shall act in the interest of the entire community, maintain a cooperative working relationship with professional and community groups and others interested in public schools, communicate to the community the result of formal board action, and communicate to other board members and the superintendent expressions of public reaction to board policies and school programs. We recommend your approval of this, as it is a second reading, and has been reviewed at a prior study session, committee meeting, and a first reading at our previous regular board meeting.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers, and Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Vice President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item 8C, Second Reading of Board Policy EF, Accessibility of Online Content. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation, the policy committee, and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy EF, Accessibility of Online Content.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And Dr. Terrell, would you be addressing this for the board?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Vice President Burton. As you recall, we have discussed this new policy at previous study sessions, committees of the whole, as well as a board meeting. This new policy is on accessibility of online content. We recognize the importance of having our digital content on our website accessible to all members of our community. This policy outlines the technical standards we use in determining the accessibility of our online content, designate a web accessibility coordinator to ensure implementation of the policy, procedures the district will follow to ensure compliance with these standards, including staff training, and grievance procedures for any accessibility concerns. This policy has been reviewed by our district attorney, as well as the Office of Civil Rights, and I bring forward this recommendation for this policy for your vote.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President, Vice President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item 8D, Second Reading of Board Policy JDAA, Physical Restraint, Removal of Policy. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Burton?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and remove the policy listed below, as this information is already included in Policy JDAA, Emergency Use of Secclusion and Restraint. Board Policy JDAA, Physical Restraint.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Dr. Terrell?
Thank you again, Vice President Burton. As you recall, we have also discussed this policy removal at a study session, a committee of the whole, and at a previous board meeting. As you also recall, the Michigan State Board of Education adopted the policy for the emergency use of seclusion and restraint in March of 2017, and this board adopted that policy in August of 2017, which includes the most recent policies and procedures for the emergency use of seclusion and restraint. Therefore, we are requesting the removal of Policy JDAA, as it is now subsumed under Policy JDAA. So, I am bringing forward this recommendation for your vote.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Vice President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item 8E, Second Reading of Board Policy, JAA, Equal Educational Opportunities. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Burton?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy JAA, Equal Educational Opportunities.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers, and Mrs. Scott, I believe you'll be addressing this for the board.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Burton. This is the second reading of Board Policy JAA, Equal Educational Opportunities, which adds a clarifying statement to name who receives the complaints regarding discrimination, along with updating the legal reference at the bottom of the policy page. We recommend approval of the stated changes to Board Policy JAA, as it has been reviewed at a previous study session, committee of the whole, and a regular board meeting.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs., I'm going to get it right. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Vice President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item 8F, Second Reading of Board Policy, JCDBA, Prohibiting Gang Activity. I move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy JCDBA, Prohibiting Gang Activity.
Support.
We have a motion by Colleen Burton, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Scott?
Yes, thank you again, Vice President Burton. As was shared previously, at a study session, committee of the whole, and a regular board meeting, we are recommending approval for the changes to Board Policy JCDBA, Prohibiting Gang Activity, to reflect a change to the penalty for violation to range from warning to expulsion, as was changed in August 2017 for Board Policy JD. We recommend adoption of the stated changes to JCDBA.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centers?
Are we making, is this becoming less lenient, or are we becoming more lenient towards this activity, or is this more to give some flexibility to administrators?
It gives flexibility, but it also goes along with the changes that are needed to reflect the changes in the law.
Great, thank you.
Are there other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, we have, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
Vice President Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes.
Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is item 8G, Selection of Candidate for MASP Board of Directors. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District designate Ergit McQuiston as the Region 8 candidate for the MASP Board of Directors, and designate the Executive Assistant of the Board of Education to cast that vote accordingly.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford. The Michigan Association of School Boards has its governing body, and each region has representatives from that body. and each region has representatives from that body. There were four candidates that we had information on, and we discussed the candidates at our previous committee of the whole meeting. It was the consensus of this Board to port the name of Bridgette McQuiston as our choice as a representative for our region for the MASP. Are there any other comments or questions on this item? Mr. Centers?
I just want to say thank you to all four candidates because they are going well beyond their required duties as school board members to really try to help promote public schools in the state. So this is commitment out of their own, their own time as a passion project, so thank you, everyone, all four of them.
Absolutely. And as was commented at our committee of the whole meeting, all four candidates appear to be superbly qualified. It was rather a difficult decision. One of the qualifications that we saw with Mitch, with Mrs. McQuiston is that she seemed to have an earnest desire in educating boards of education to do their work. And that seemed to be one thing that was noted by this Board of Education as far as putting her name forth. Any other comments from Board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Bonfield, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. Vice President Burton?
Yes. The motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 8H, Approval of Board, Approval for Board Members to Attend CBA Classes. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Burton?
Mrs. Bonfield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the participation of Board Trustees in MASP CBA classes at Wayne Risa in March 2018 for a total final cost of $405, as shown below. Mark Johnson will take one session, March 8, 2018, and session two, March 22, 2018, of the Board President Workshop. The cost is $360. Wayne Risa will refund 50% of the cost, bringing the final total to $180. Tammy Bonfield, Karen Bradford, Colleen Burton, Liz Jarvis, and Crystal Frank will take CBA 310, Anatomy of a School Budget, on March 8, 2018. Cost is $90 per person for a total of $450. Wayne Risa will refund 50% of the cost, bringing the final total to $225.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonfield, supported by Mr. Centers. The Michigan Association of School Boards provides a wealth of classes for school board members, which is, in my opinion, vital to the, to the well-being of school boards throughout the state of Michigan. As, as in any profession that we begin our work in, no one knows exactly how to do the whole thing without any training whatsoever. And yet, boards of education are elected and on their first day need to begin functioning. I thank the MASP for offering such a wealth of, of, of classes and that touch on such vital, timely topics. And certainly, these that are brought forth tonight, Board President Workshop for our incoming president, and Anatomy of a School Budget, and we all sitting in this room know how vital those are. Those are very appropriate courses for this Board of Education to make sure that they are well-versed on. I thank my fellow Board members for being so diligent in taking the time out of their own personal time. Frequently, it's, it's either nights or weekends to, to make sure that they are, are educated to do the job that is put before us. It's, it's very important, and I think that it's time very well spent. But thanks to, to all of you who actually take the time away from your own personal lives and your own families to make sure that, that you're appropriately educated to do this job. I'd also like to thank Wayne Risa. In my nine years on the Board, this is the first time I have noticed Wayne Risa is offering to have the courses at their building and then refunding half that cost back to districts in an obvious effort to have Board of Education, Boards of Education, rather, in Wayne County, well-educated and to do their job. I thank those folks at Wayne Risa who put forth this initiative. Other comments or questions from other members of the Board or the Superintendent? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonfield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonfield, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Vice President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. That brings us to Item 8I, Hearing from Board Members. As has become customary for our Board of Education, rather than having seven people repeat largely the same thanks, we have, we have designated an individual to take care of that on behalf of our Board of Education. Certainly, others are welcome to give their comments afterward. This evening, we will hear from Mrs. Bradford on behalf of the Board.
Oh, thank you, Vice President Burton. Well, I'm probably going to reiterate quite the many nice compliments that were happening earlier this evening. And we had the privilege of having the Principals Week this week, and I am glad Ann Owen was here. And we are very grateful for the leadership that we have at all of our buildings in Livonia Public Schools. And on behalf of the Board, thank you for all you do. And also, we had the pleasure of seeing Lawrence DeLuca and a wonderful PTA parent and two children speak on behalf of the Nijiiro Japanese Immersion School. What an awesome program that is. It's great to see that it's growing and thriving, and we're thankful for that program and the other programs that Livonia Public Schools offers. In addition, programs such as ACAT, MACAT, Livonia Career Tech Center, the IB Program, the MSC Programs, Global Education Programs. We really are blessed to have some extra added programs in our district that benefit all of our students, from the young ones all the way up to high school. So that's very great. And a couple weeks ago, I had the pleasure of attending the Western Wayne Skills Center basketball game, and what a pleasure that was at Stevenson. I wish every school could have an opportunity to see this program and see these talented 18 to 26-year-olds play basketball. It was a really great day, and I, it was really nice to see the partnership between the high school students and the, and the other students from Western Wayne Skills Center. At one point, some of the boys were standing behind one of the teams at first, and, and throughout the game, the next thing you know, they were actually sitting on the bench with the students. So it was really fun to see that. And I hope that you continue that program and move it around at different various schools again. So that was excellent, and the Sharks are pretty awesome, so it was fun. And also, to the Palm Teams, for all our Palm Teams across not only Franklin, but Stevenson and Churchill, all participated in that state Poms. And congratulations to all teams. Same with the Wrestlers. Keep on wrestling and do a great job. And to all our sports teams, you know, these kids work really hard every day to practice their athletic skills, and I'm just grateful we have these programs for them. And congrats to all our athletic teams. And I don't want to forget the arts and the music because they're fabulous, too. We have such great talent, and the Board recognizes all this talent, but it is due to our teachers and our administrators and our principals and parents. Everybody participates and helps grow our students in all of their talents, so. And academics with the math. Let me not forget that. Congratulations, Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you.
And that's about it for tonight.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Are there other comments from Board members or the Superintendent? One thing I'd like to bring to folks' attention, the Board of Education was notified this week, and I believe this notice went out to, to parents also. We are continually trying to, striving to improve in, in every area that we serve our students and our families. And one of those areas is in conference times. We know that we've had to adjust things over the years, and we heard from a number of parents this fall that there was just simply not enough time available for conferences. I'm, I'm thrilled to be part of a district that listens and makes adjustments whenever they, they can. And the Spring Conference will also, I understand, have an additional two-hour afternoon time slot in an effort to alleviate some of the congestion of the evening. So on behalf of the Board, I'd like to thank our administrative team for working diligently with our, our teachers to come up with an alternative that will work better for our families. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of the Board? Seeing none, we are now adjourned from our regular meeting. We are going to take a brief recess, I believe. Is that correct, Mrs. Okus?
Just about five minutes. We'll set up a table, and then we'll get going.
We'll be recessed for about five minutes, and then we will begin our Committee of the Whole Meeting of February 12, 2018. We are now at recess. Actually, we're now adjourned. We'll see you in five minutes.[1232.94]
Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting of February 12th, 2018. If you're watching at home and you'd like to follow along on an agenda, you can find them on our website, which is at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to an agenda for the evening. I don't believe we have any other visitors in our room with us this evening. If there are any that I'm not seeing, our agendas can be found just outside our room. This evening's meeting, at this portion, it is committee of the whole meeting, we will have some deep discussion about the items being brought before the Board. However, we will not be voting on these meetings, on these items tonight. Any items that are brought forth for a vote after tonight's discussion will be voted on at our February 26th special meeting. The first item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips. Is there anyone present who would like to participate in Audience Communications? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next item. Item two is Committee of the Whole. I don't have any items for Committee of the Whole. Mrs. Oakus, is there anything for the Committee of the Whole?
I do not, Vice President Burton. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is Item Three, Building in Sight. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Centers.
Thank you, Vice President Burton. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Centers, the item that's coming before the Board this evening, I'm going to be abstaining on. I do have a member of my family who bid on, who bid to some of the mechanical contractors that are listed in this document. I do not by law have to abstain, however, out of an abundance of transparency, I'm going to do so. So I'll be abstaining from the discussion tonight.
Thank you very much. Well, we'll get started with Item A, which is 2018 Construction Projects, 2013 Bond. Okay. And Mrs. Oakus will get us started.
Thank you so much, Mr. Centers. We have with us this evening Paul Terrell and Scott Smith from Plantmar and Cressa, who, as you know, have been our longtime owners' representatives throughout the bond, actually since we got started in the planning phase to even initially go out for our initial bond issue in 2013. As you know, they've been an integral part of our planning work, along with our bond team, members of our Operations and Maintenance Department, members of our Cabinet Team, and then each of our building-based planning teams. This is one of those exciting nights where we are able to bring to you a wide variety of recommendations related to the summer 2018 renovations. As you know, we are in Phase Five of five, and so we are very excited to be bringing forward information to you regarding Webster Elementary, Buchanan Elementary, Jackson Early Childhood Center, Livonia Career Technical Center. We will be reviewing not only the recommendations from Plantmar and Cressa, but also from our construction manager, Ock, who is also an important part of our bond team and assists us with this process. We'll be going through each of these recommendations with you, as well as recommended alternates. The Board, as Mrs. Burton said, will not be voting this evening. We will have a two-week period of time during which the Board is welcome to respond with any follow-up questions or requests for information. We would be more than happy to get that together for you. And then we will have a special meeting just prior to our study session on February 26th. That will be a voting meeting to vote on the items that we're bringing forward this evening for discussion. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our owners' representatives from Plantmar and Cressa to get us started this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Oakus. So, really, wanted to give a little bit of historical perspective as we're here tonight with what might be the last binder for the bond, which sounds kind of crazy. Time goes by fast. You know, one of the first things when the bond passed that we were tasked with was to make sure that the budget was kind of engineered in a way that would put us in a successful position when we came to the end of the bond project. And with a lot of hard work, a lot of support from the Board and from administration, I'm pretty pleased to be here tonight with enough money to do the last phase. That's not always the case in school bonds. There can be a lot of pressure over four or five years in the market. There can be a lot of scope creep. There can be issues with designs and contractors that can really stress out a bond project of this magnitude, especially with the high expectations that the community has for all the work that was promised and, in this case, delivered very successfully. So, really, just wanted to give a little bit of historical context, especially on these four projects. Whenever you get down to the end, the fear is always that you won't have enough money to do the last three or four projects, and they'll get short-changed in some way. This budget for Buchanan, Webster, CTC, and Jackson has went through a little bit of transformation over the last few years. Some of these budgets were, I don't want to say they were thrown against the wall, but, you know, there was, these projects are a little bit more unique than the average middle school, high school, elementary school. You've got Buchanan, which had been renovated in, I think, 2005 or 2006, originally only had about a $400,000 budget. We knew pretty early on that that probably wasn't going to be enough to bring that building to the same standard as all the other buildings. Webster and CTC's budgets were fairly healthy, but again, construction prices in 2010 and 11, when the bond's being planned, 2013, 14, 15, in the first couple of phases, are a lot different than they are in 2018, when we're on such a hot run with construction in the Detroit area and southeastern Michigan. So we've looked at changing those budgets a couple times along the way. And then same thing, really, with Jackson. That building has not had a lot of work done in the last 50 years, for those that have been through it recently, and that budget was probably not adequate when it was originally set up. So really, the initial budget for those four projects was about $8.5 million. Back in early 2017, in the spring of 2017, we had brought to the Board that we thought we should augment the budget by $1 million, or a little bit more than $1 million, up to $9.8 million. We also, at one time, decided to kind of rebrand all the district buildings with new entryways and archways and benches and bollards and all of the lighting there. Those budgets were really a separate budget that we had been kind of adding to each renovation project as we went along. So when you start to add those in, and not just for these four buildings, but for Nigirro and Central Office and Garfield and some of the other buildings, that required us to increase the budget again, up to about $12.2 million, along with some additional monies to renovate those buildings. So, really, where we started at about $8.5, the current budget, when we presented last October, if you remember the big spreadsheet where we looked ahead at 2018, 2019, 2020, and the sinking fund in the bond, and what we had kind of planned out with administration and presented to the Board at that time, we were looking at a budget of about $12.2 or $12.3 million. As I said originally, typically, when you get to the end of a bond like this, you're making difficult decisions because there's not enough money left to do all the work that you'd like to, but I think because we were prudent early on, because the administration was prudent not setting such a high bar, or too high of a bar unrealistically to be able to do, you know, the same level of renovations in all the buildings. Because we did that, we're in a pretty good position now where we can do what's right and get these buildings renovated. That was last October. If you remember, in November, we came back with the DD estimate for these projects, and even the DD estimate even exceeded that $12.3 million budget. We were about 5% over on our projection at the DD estimate time, which had us at about $12.8. The bids we have tonight are even a little bit higher than that. Things have not cooled down at all. Trying to get bids from carpenters, glass and glazers, masons, has been a pretty tough out there in the market the last six or seven months. There just aren't enough good quality contractors out there anymore. A lot of them left during the recession. A lot of them went out of business. There's just really not enough manpower out there for everything that's going on downtown and in the suburbs, so. So we have, there's a couple bid divisions that we're looking to rebid as, as part of these awards, but for the most part, you know, we came in roughly 5% or 6% over where our projection was last November, which thankfully, we do have the money set aside to cover that, so. Hopefully, that gives a little bit of big-picture perspective. I'm going to let Mr. Smith kind of take it from here, so, unless there's any questions.
Thank you. I think that's a great lead-in. As you'll see when we get into some of the numbers, we've tried to prepare this recommendation in two ways. First, this is a partial recommendation and is not a complete actual buyout of all the projects. As Mr. Terrell stated, we are currently out for bid, or rebid, for the masonry and carpentry packages. So when we go through the numbers, you'll see a recommendation to date, but we felt it was important to kind of give you an idea of where we think we'll be when we factor in those awards, too. Those bids come in this Friday, so we're optimistic. We just didn't get the bid coverage we wanted the first time around. We've adjusted some, some things, reached out to different folks, and we're more optimistic this time around for these trades. But in totality, that's about another $1 million between these trades. It isn't in the award recommendation tonight, but we factored in in terms of being another 5% to 6% projected overage overall. So for tonight, it is a large award. We're seeking a recommendation. Hard construction, I'm on Tab Two, or Tab Two, which is our overall summary. It's broken down by building. Buchanan, Webster, Jackson, and the Career Technical Center are each broken out separately. And it's also important to note that within each building is the entryway itself. So when you look at the line item for entryways for Churchill, Garfield, Nigirro, and the Administration Building, those are really just for those four facilities. So again, that hard construction amount would be $10,706,877. We have construction management fees from the George Ock Company of $759,569. We've maintained an 8% contingency totaling $941,539. So again, tonight, the total recommendation for discussion is $12,407,985 amongst all the buildings. In general, we did receive, actually, very good bid coverage, particularly in trades where there was high dollar value, such as mechanical and electrical. Glass was another big trade, but we probably got two to three bidders on average there, so it wasn't huge. We've seen that in other districts that we're working in. That's just another one of those tough trades right now, along with carpentry and masonry. In general, the low bidder on bid day is the recommended firm in this letter, with a couple of exceptions, and both of them are really over at Jackson Elementary. The first bidder that fell out was our plumbing contractor. When you looked at his bid relative to others, he was quite low compared to the others, and as we pulled him in and went through the scope of work, he realized an error in his bid, so he withdrew his proposal. The other firm was the electrician at Jackson. Again, we've got a significant amount of abatement activities this, this summer, which are going to take upwards of five weeks to complete, and that will really condense the schedule in terms of what's left at the other, for the other trades to complete their work. So upon review of that schedule, he realized that he doesn't have the right manpower for that, and we're thankful that this is coming to light now, as opposed to when we're in the heat of battle. There was a small adjustment with the testing and balancing firm, but again, going to the second bidder, there was very, was a very minor cost adjustment. And the last person was the painter over at Buchanan Elementary. He did not provide a complete bid by bidding the alternates, which I will get into. The direction from the district was to accept. He had an incomplete proposal, and so we've moved on to the second bidder. With regards to alternates, there weren't a ton of alternates here, but there are four in total that I wanted to make sure that I mentioned and went over. Feel free to ask questions about them, but they are included in the recommendation for tonight. The first two are over at the Career Technical Center. When you walk into that building, you'll see a lot of terrazzo in the corridors.
Mr. Smith, I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page with us. So you're in, you should be in the bid tab. That includes Ock's recommendation letter, and so you should be in bid tab three. We're on the second page that was reviewing the alternates. So it's Section A3, and we're on Page Two.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so there is a great deal of information here, and there are a lot of numbers, so if anybody gets lost, please raise your hand, and I'd be glad to slow down or get, yes.
Can you just talk to us about alternates? Means alternate, not the lowest bidder? Alternates are?
So an alternate is an alternate scope of work. It's not part of what we, what we deemed as the scope of work. They're things that we'd like to consider, or maybe not consider, depending on various things. They're things that, in general, the district would like to entertain doing, so we identify them as alternates and bid them out as such, with respective trades providing add or deduct pricing relative to the assigned scope of work. So these would be four scopes of work that were under consideration from the district that we moved forward with, designed, priced out, reviewed, and then ultimately are now recommending.
So, Mrs. Frank, sometimes that may come as a result of a request directly from the district. That may come as a recommendation from our architect as we're working through a design. It may come as a request from the school. That may not have been something that was part of the scope of previous schools. Some of the schools we're talking about this evening have unique programs and unique needs, and so there may be things that came up that were not part of the overall scope in the first four phases. And so as we took a look at that, we determined whether or not, taking that alternate, one, we look at the, the work itself and the request that's been made, and then we look at the dollar amount in relation to the budget that we have before us.
And that's included in this pricing right now?
It is included in the, correct.
Part of the pricing?
The alternates I'm going to be speaking on are all included dollar-wise in the recommendation itself.
In this recommendation, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, good.
In total, if you add them all up, it's really about $60,000.
Okay.
If you add up all of the alternates. So the first two are, again, are over at the Career Center. The first one has to do with the flooring. When you walk in that, there's some very nice terrazzo, which you'll see, as reminiscent of terrazzo you'll see throughout the district. But a lot of that corridors and such have been covered over the years with carpet at the Career Center. So our thought would be, let's pull the carpet back, let's expose the terrazzo, let's refinish it and have it match the rest of the building. We weren't sure that building has been renovated over the years. Different things have been installed. We weren't sure what was really under the carpet. We could have got into a situation where there was plumbing installed, so there was a lot of saw cuts, trenches, and at the end of the day, it really wasn't going to look very good, despite wanting to keep the terrazzo. So we bid it as an alternate to replace it with VCT, which is typical in all of our corridors. Just recently, we did some more due diligence with the team, taxed the memories of those that have been around the district for a while, and learned that what we're probably going to find when we tear this thing up is that it's really just a bunch of concrete. So we moved forward with recommending this alternate. It's something we would ultimately have done anyway, and the good news, in this instance, it's a net reduction in, in cost to the district. Doing this through the bid process maximized that savings as well. It would have been a tougher negotiation trying to get money back from the terrazzo folks and the ads from the flooring guys. The second alternate over there was to replace, remove and replace the existing overhead doors on the district. Most of them are over in the shop part of the building. Part of the scope was to paint those doors to match some of the new paint that you'll see in the metal around. That was about $4,000 to paint it. The doors themselves are getting up there in age. They have glass in them, which is not desired by the district. We felt it was, it was wise to accept this because the pricing for the doors themselves was very competitive, and it was money that you wouldn't have, the money that you would have paid the painter could be applied against the cost of the door itself to reduce the net effect and impact of it. So we're recommending that at a total of $17,900. I should mention that the first alternate was a net savings of $19,245 relative to the corridor flooring. The other alternate, which is probably the-
So let me stop for a moment. So if you picture the Livonia Career Technical Center, these are the doors leading to the shop area. There's at the front of, of the classroom, so to speak, and at the back. So there are three bays, so we would replace all six of those doors, and then there's one additional door on the other side of the school.
The third alternate is jumping over to Jackson. As you walk down those two main corridors, you may recall, there's some clear-story glass that's probably eight to 10 feet tall. In a lot of cases, as you walk down that corridor, it sits rather low, so even the average-type person can, can walk in and down the corridor and almost look into the rooms themselves. You'll find that over the, each, most of the classrooms have put some sort of privacy construction paper, what have you, to minimize that. There's a lot of light that spills into the classrooms during naptime, so they end up turning all the hallway lights off. It's older glass. It's, it's not tempered, meaning it has, if it were to break, it wouldn't, it would shatter, most likely. We've got young students and, and children in the building. So we looked at a price to maybe get rid of that and replace it with metal studs and drywall, and then just paint the wall. So we did price that out, and we are recommending that through discussions with the school itself. It is something they would, we find extremely valuable, and would, would very much look forward to that change. It would allow us to do some different things with the aesthetic and maybe lower that ceiling a little bit, too. It's much higher than the, the actual classrooms itself, so. That net effect, if you add in all the different trades, was an add of $48,519. And then the last alternate was, was a painting alternate over at Buchanan. Again, we're not painting the whole building. We're actually only touching portions of the building. Generally, from a painting perspective, we're, we're doing some things around the front entryway. We're, we're painting the teaching walls in each of the classrooms, giving it an accent. And we are painting the corridor doors and frames that are currently green. The alternate here was, what about, what happens to all the interior doors that are inside of a classroom that lead to a bathroom or a storage closet of some sort? They're still going to be green. So we priced it out. It came in at $11,500. This would allow us to get rid of the, the green and complete the, the transformation of color, so to speak, at that school, so we are recommending that as well.
Do you understand, do you understand what we're doing there?
That's only at Buchanan, right. It doesn't, that doesn't say where it's going to happen.
Right. So because we're not painting the entire classroom itself, as we have with the others, we're just, we're simply painting the teaching wall, because, as you know, that, that school is more recently renovated. Once we do that and we paint the exterior hallway doors and jams, the interior area would have a different color. And so it really made sense aesthetically. If we're going to come through and we're going to do that, you'd have the teaching wall painted, you'd have the interior door jams, which would then match the door jam to the hallway.
And the doors.
Mm-hmm.
Only at Buchanan, though.
Yes.
So at CTC or Webster, all of that is going to be done because it's in the, the original scope suit?
Right.
Hundred percent correct. Yep.
Right.
Yep. Those would be, the other schools would be completely painted as, as part of the scope in those rooms. Buchanan was a little bit different because the scope was more isolated to specific parts of the building, given the more recent renovations. As you turn further in your packet, we've attached a couple of letters, withdrawal letters from the two contractors I mentioned. I'm going to skip over some of the rest of the recommendation and jump into Tab Four. This is kind of a ch- But a lot of that corridors and such have been covered over the years with carpet at the Career Center. So our thought would be, let's pull the carpet back, let's expose the terrazzo, let's refinish it and have it match the rest of the building. We weren't sure that building has been renovated over the years. Different things have been installed. We weren't sure what was really under the carpet. We could have got into a situation where there was plumbing installed, so there was a lot of saw cuts, trenches, and at the end of the day, it really wasn't going to look very good despite wanting to keep the terrazzo. So we bid it as an alternate to replace it with VCT, which is typical in all of our corridors. Just recently, we did some more due diligence with the team, taxed the memories of those that have been around the district for a while, and learned that what we're probably going to find when we tear this thing up is that it's really just a bunch of concrete. So we moved forward with recommending this alternate. It's something we would ultimately have done anyway. And the good news in this instance, it's a net reduction in cost to the district. Doing this through the bid process maximized that savings as well. It would have been a tougher negotiation trying to get money back from the terrazzo folks and the ads from the flooring guys. The second alternate over there was to replace, remove and replace the existing overhead doors on the district. Most of them are over in the shop part of the building. Part of the scope was to paint those doors to match some of the new paint that you'll see in the metal around. That was about $4,000 to paint it. The doors themselves are getting up there in age. They have glass in them, which is not desired by the district. We felt it was wise to accept this because the pricing for the doors themselves was very competitive, and it was money that you wouldn't have... The money that you would have paid the painter could be applied against the cost of the door itself to reduce the net effect and impact of it. So we're recommending that at a total of $17,900. I should mention that the first alternate was a net savings of $19,245 relative to the corridor flooring. The other alternate, which is probably the...
So let me stop for a moment. So if you picture the Livonia Career Technical Center, these are the doors leading to the shop area. There's at the front of the classroom, so to speak, and at the back. So there are three bays, so we would replace all six of those doors, and then there's one additional door on the other side of the school.
The third alternate is jumping over to Jackson. As you walk down those two main corridors, you may recall there's some clear story glass that's probably eight to 10 feet tall. In a lot of cases, as you walk down that corridor, it sits rather low, so even the average height person can walk in and down the corridor and almost look into the rooms themselves. You'll find that over the... Most of the classrooms have put some sort of privacy, construction paper, what have you, to minimize that. There's a lot of light that spills into the classrooms during nap time, so they end up turning all the hallway lights off. It's older glass. It's not tempered, meaning if it were to break, it would shatter most likely. We've got young students and children in the building. So we looked at a price to maybe get rid of that and replace it with metal studs and drywall and then just paint the wall. So we did price that out, and we are recommending that through discussions with the school itself. It is something we find extremely valuable. It would very much look forward to that change. It would allow us to do some different things with the aesthetic and maybe lower that ceiling a little bit, too. It's much higher than the actual classrooms itself, so that net effect, if you add in all the different trades, was an add of $48,519. And then the last alternate was a painting alternate over at Buchanan. Again, we're not painting the whole building. We're actually only touching portions of the building. Generally, from a painting perspective, we're doing some things around the front entryway. We're painting the teaching walls in each of the classrooms, giving it an accent. And we are painting the corridor doors and frames that are currently green. The alternate here was, what happens to all the interior doors that are inside of a classroom that lead to a bathroom or a storage closet of some sort? They're still going to be green. So we priced it out. It came in at $11,500. This would allow us to get rid of the green and complete the transformation of color, so to speak, at that school. So we are recommending that as well.
Do you understand what we're doing there?
That's only at Buchanan, right? It doesn't say where it's going to happen.
Right. So because we're not painting the entire classroom itself as we have with the others, we're simply painting the teaching wall, because as you know, that school is more recently renovated. Once we do that and we paint the exterior hallway doors and jams, the interior area would have a different color. And so it really made sense aesthetically. If we're going to come through and we're going to do that, you'd have the teaching wall painted, you'd have the interior door jams, which would then match the door jam to the hallway.
And the doors.
Mm-hmm.
Only at Buchanan, though.
Yes.
Correct.
So like CTC or Webster, all of that is going to be done because it's in the original scope.
Right.
Hundred percent correct.
Right.
Yep. Those would be... The other schools would be completely painted as part of the scope in those rooms. Buchanan was a little bit different because the scope was more isolated to specific parts of the building, given the more recent renovations. As you turn further in your packet, we've attached a couple of letters, withdrawal letters, from the two contractors I mentioned. I'm going to skip over some of the rest of the recommendation and jump into tab four. This is kind of a chance to dive a little bit deeper into the numbers themselves. So the first tab is kind of a sideways tab. What this is, this is a summary of hard construction to date projected in total, and it brings in all of the various buildings together. In some respects, it's restated in the budget summary that we saw before. But again, we've got about $1,056,000 between the masonry and carpentry categories that are out for rebid that will be... We factored into this to kind of paint the picture of where we think we'll be when we come back in March to recommend the remaining trades.
So are you using the estimate numbers to project those out?
We are. We're continuing with the design development estimate that was prepared by the George Ock Company for those numbers.
These are not...
So the first column is the current project award hard construction, and it's subtitled in blue with $10,706,877.
Those are actual bids?
Those are... Yep. The next column over is the projected future award, so that's the masonry and carpentry bids that are currently out for bid totaling $1,056,000. And then simply summing those together, the hard construction is projected out at $11,762,877. The aux staffing and the construction contingency, those are a percentage... The CM fee and the contingency are generally percentage-based. So what we did do to simplify this is we simply put in... We calculated those fees with the assumption at $1,056 of the projected awards, so that we're not adjusting those next time we come back. Next time we come back, we'll truly be just recommending the subcontractors. So the contingency will be approximately 8%, and the CM fee will be approximately 1.8%. And it always will get adjusted out at the end of the project as well, any subtle variations from the $1,056. And again, that was done to kind of simplify the remaining process and not have to re-recommend a new contingency amount next time, and we could just focus on the rebid categories.
Okay. So why don't we stop just there for a moment, since that's a little bit different than what we've done in the past, and make sure that we're all on the same page? So the section in blue is what is being recommended today and on which you will vote on the 26th. The section in gray are the two remaining bid categories for which we've gone out. They're being rebid, and those bid results are coming in this Friday. We will review them, but these are the anticipated dollar amounts that would be for the categories of masonry and carpentry. So in order to bring to you this evening the CM fees and the contingency fees based on what we anticipate to be the total dollar amount of hard construction, we made the projection in gray so that when you move forward, the only thing you'll have remaining to vote are the actual hard construction costs from those two contractors. If you want to take a minute and look at that, if you have any questions, we can clarify that.
The $1 million is what we're going to be voting on later.
Yes, exactly.
Correct.
Yes, the $12,407 is the number for discussion tonight.
What does the future project award include?
Those are truly just the rebid categories for masonry and carpentry across all the projects.
The ones that we're still waiting for?
Yes, that are coming in on Friday.
Interesting.
And those are our estimates from our DD estimate. Yes?
I think you said it like four times, but...
On the 26th.
And you said so, but the $1,000 is including the 5% contingency or the contingency for that $1,000, that million is already included in the $900,000? Or there's going to be 5% contingency on top of that million? I'm sorry. I know you said that.
No, no. That's already been included in the blue category for both the CM fees and the contingency fees. So we're estimating that in the 1.8% for the CMs and the 8%, approximate 8% contingency on the anticipated award total have all been included in blue. So you will not be adding those dollar amounts onto the final recommendations for masonry and carpentry.
Okay.
Any other questions on the summary tab? Again, we felt it important to show you where we're at as of today, but where we think we'll be later, so you guys have a clear picture, particularly because we're over budget in some respects with these projects.
Well, even... Okay, so you say we're slightly over budget, but we do have enough funds for that, or we're going to be using some other funds?
We do. We do have... Mr. Chair, if you want to go over that, we do have not only contingency dollars remaining, we also have our accrued interest remaining, and then we have the dollars that we anticipate realizing at the end of the bond from the technology committee. So we certainly have more than enough to cover this, but if you want to go into a little bit more detail on that...
If you think back to the last dashboard report that we gave, that should have shown about $2 million left in owner contingency, which is above and beyond where these budgets were at. And then in addition, there's about $1,000,500 in projected interest from the life of the bond that we have not been including in the budget. And then, as Ms. Oakley has mentioned, there's about $1,000,500 in IT savings that we're projecting to have as well. So in total, we have about $5 million. And then in order to augment this budget, we're looking at about $1 million. So we're still in very good shape overall, especially five years in, so.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. Do these dollars include the transfer of $300,000 from the sinking fund to cover the entranceways?
They do not. We are recommending that, and when we get to the entryways, we'll talk specifically about Niji Iro and the administration building, for which we had, at this point, determined that we would only use sinking fund dollars, and then we will further that conversation regarding Niji as we finalize these Phase Five projects. And so that recommendation would then go back, if we were to take that from the sinking fund and augment the bond budget to the tune of about $300,000.
Any other questions or comments?
The next four, actually five pages, is really a school-by-school breakdown of the individual summary. So the first page would be Buchanan, and as you work down that, we have the different trades, the recommended subcontractor for that work. We've broken it out into their base bid. We've itemized any alternate work. If it's a category that's out for rebid, we've highlighted it and shaded it in gray to draw attention to it and put it in its own column. And then again, the total amount would be where we think it will be if you factor in current plus projected bids. And then as you work towards the bottom of each sheet, in, I guess it'd be blue to me, we've got a current project award, and then we've got a projected project award on a per project basis. Again, that will total out and carry over into the summary sheet from before. Again, Buchanan's scope, for the most part, a lot of few big things there. We've got a brand-new control system in the building. That was something that was not part of the renovations from before. We've got a brand-new fire alarm system in the building. We've got the new secure entrance vestibules. We've got the entryway archway. Within the classrooms, we're putting in all the teacher drops and painting the accent walls and getting those ready for the projectors as well. I would say, in general, those are some of the highlights from Buchanan. The rest is more collateral work that is associated with some of that work. We've got a little bit of mechanical HVAC unit replacement, some new lighting. There's a few rooms that are changing rooms, art rooms moving to a kindergarten room, for example. So there's a little bit of reconfiguration, but very minimal. So that's what's going on at Buchanan. The next page is Webster. Webster is a complete remodel, with the exception of the media center and kitchen areas that we've have traditionally not renovated throughout the bond. Webster's a little bit unique in that it has some special programs, so a lot of these classrooms will be equipped with air conditioning and portions of the building. That's not necessarily typical in every school. It's as required by need and by program. Again, it's very reminiscent, if you will, if you've been through Coolidge or been by Coolidge. It's not exactly the same, of course, but that's a great head start in terms of what it will look like. We're adding a little vestibule out front with a canopy for the new secure vestibule. Pretty much from there, it's very common, consistent, new controls, new lights, new HVAC equipment, new fire alarm, new finishes throughout. All the schools are getting a new generator for life safety. It will also tie in all the emergency lighting. Getting a few new lockers at this school in the back. A lot of the lockers there are newer, with the exception of probably the most recent wing of the building, but also has the oldest lockers that were original to that, so we'll be replacing those. We are doing some transformation to their... They call it their multipurpose room. So we'll be adding a doorway into the outside from there and a couple of windows and refreshing that space as well, giving it a little bit more life. But again, Webster, a lot of scope, very heavy, has a lot of abatement work as well. So that will be, I would say, between Webster and Jackson, those will have the most work going on this summer in terms of between all the abatement and all the construction activities.
Questions on Webster? So this will be much more like the overall renovation and remodels at our other schools.
The next school is Jackson.
On the painting...
Yes?
I know we had some issues last summer. Is this a different painter contractor? Is this the same painter? Or the issues have been resolved that we found and we painted last summer?
This is a painter that's been in the district. I wouldn't say he's... Actually, can't pinpoint any of these painting issues on a specific painter a lot of times. It's a product of the existing conditions. It's a product of the material. And doing, in some cases, as you say, preparation work, which is a direct result of the subcontractor. But this is a painter that has been in the district. He's been active on a lot of the elementary schools over time.
And we've modified our processes and what we expect with regard to preparation and materials.
We have. Several times.
We have a fix...
We do.
Before we start, it's...
We do, and we've gone back to those schools where we've re-propred and had those repainted, and they are holding up beautifully. And so that issue was addressed at the prior schools and also has given us appropriate knowledge moving forward with those expectations for the contractors we're bringing in.
Any other comments on Webster? Moving on to Jackson Early Childhood Center. As you recall, this is a building that we've discussed at our DD presentation and talked about the direction for this school. The team moved forward based on that and have finalized the scope that's going to get similar renovations to all the other schools and bring it up to speed with all the years of work that had been done over the years. So in terms of, you know, cost per square foot, this school definitely is getting more. It has much more need. Pretty much, I think when you guys... It'd be almost interesting to have you guys go through it again now and then just come back through at the end of August, early September.
Before and after pictures?
Yeah. I think this school amongst... I mean, they all look greatly different, but you'll see some huge transformations, I think, at this school. All the window systems, which are a huge percentage of the exterior enclosure, all brand-new. The soffits that are overhanging the building, all going to be replaced. The... It's kind of been essentially boarded over, but over at the gym area, that's all coming off. That'll be bricked in with masonry and some windows, giving it a real permanency and a lot of light coming in. And again, we talked about the clear story glass being removed and then filled with drywall. The mechanical systems will be brand-new, you know? That's another reason here. This school actually needs a brand-new electrical service to handle all the new air conditioning loads from the new equipment. A lot of the air conditioning in there now is just through window units. These are going to be unit ventilators, similar to where we've got them elsewhere, but they'll have the air conditioning feature as part of it. So there'll be a brand-new electrical service for that building, brand-new switchgear. It's just a lot of things over time. This is kind of catching up and getting it on pace with the rest of the buildings. But very excited for the transformation here, for sure. Trying to think of some other things, but again, this will get the entryway element as well. It will get a new secure vestibule.
Lining replacements.
Yeah.
Full scope.
Full scope. One nice thing about Jackson, it actually has a newer fire alarm system that some of the other buildings don't have, so we won't be replacing that entirely, but we'll be moving devices here and there and adding them as needed for the renovations. But full scope of work, as Paul stated. I think, again, most of your costs here are going to be in the mechanical electrical systems, just getting those up to speed, replacing old piping, certainly the units Any questions at Jackson? Next building is the Career Technical Center. Again, for those listening in at home, this is the building across from Churchill High School that's set back in. This school, as we stated back in November, a lot of the scope is heavy into the mechanical systems at this school, mechanical, electrical, again. The buildings and the rooms in this building are actually... There aren't as many, but they're quite large. And for the most part, again, it's very typical scope, so all the finishes, all the mechanical systems, all of the lighting, a new generator. Very minimal going on in the shop area. It's predominantly in the building itself, absent of some HVAC units, some door replacements. And as Ms. Oakley stated, we're going to be looking at the overhead doors and replacing those as well. Aren't a lot of window treatments, I guess.
Not a lot of windows.
Not a lot of windows in the building. But again, new painting, lighting, the traditional scope applies here as well.
Flooring, ceilings.
Yep.
Instructional walls for the teachers.
Mm-hmm. New entryway element, again, there. These wall... Nothing's changed since our DD presentation relative to the concept or the design of those, so they'll be as presented. Any questions or comments regarding the Career Center? And then our last breakdown is really for the entryways. And when I say that, it's, again, the remaining entryways, so at Churchill High School, Niji Iro Elementary, Central Office, and then also Garfield Community School. So that's what's summarized here. And again, for the most part, all bid out with the exception of the masonry category. And as the discussion was stated earlier, we'd be looking to augment the bond fund by $300,000 from the sinking fund to assist with the costs associated with the Niji Iro and the Central Office entryways. Questions, comments?
So it's certainly a lot of detailed information, but we wanted to make sure we're thorough and transparent, as always. So there's a lot of numbers to sort through. If there's questions during the week or whatever, we're happy to answer whatever we can. As we said at the beginning, you know, the budget's kind of grown over the last four or five years as we've kind of set a new standard, a new district standard for excellence at all the other buildings. So we wanted to make sure that with this last phase that we kept that same standard of these last four buildings.
I just have a question. The $300,000 from the sinking fund that we're taking to help cover the costs, is there's a reason we can't use the bond money for those archways? Or can you talk about that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So it's not that we can't. That was not part of the original scope. One of the commitments that was made when the bond was first proposed to the community and voted upon was that the renovations would not include the Central Office complex.
Okay.
And so as we've had needs that exist, it's a relatively old facility, and so as we've had needs that have existed and brought those to the board, we've made those recommendations out of our sinking fund.
Okay.
With regard to Niji Iro, again, as we reviewed, as we did our big budget review after the closures of two of our schools and we reallocated some of those funds, we began... began to have that discussion with regard to the remaining funds via the owner contingency, the interest, et cetera, and where we might want to go in summer of 2019. We had the discussion about Nigieiro and the programs there, and the need for that facility formerly Taylor Elementary to be updated. At this point in time, we've not made the determination of the funding source for that work, so both, but what we didn't want to do was exclude them from the scope, so both for the playground and for the entryways, it would have been much more expensive to come back and, and design that work and do that work as a separate project.
Okay.
And so we included them in Phase 5 for both the playground and the entryway. We're recommending at this point in time, just to remain consistent with our processes until we make those final recommendations, and the board makes a final decision with regard to the remaining dollars, that we continue to pay for those items out of the sinking fund. Certainly, that's the board's prerogative, if they, if you'd like to have that conversation now, or adjust that process as we go forward. Otherwise, what we'd like to do is wait through the final bid awards for Phase 5, and closing out all of the costs for Phase 4, and then bring to you recommendations with regard to the remaining funds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Mrs. Bonnefield.
So I know we've asked questions 10 different ways, and sorry, but just, I just want to be clear, so Buchanan has been recently renovated, and we're going through, and they're going to be brought up to the same standard as all the other buildings.
Correct.
Okay. Webster Elementary is going to be brought up to the same standards as all the other buildings.
Correct.
Yep.
Jackson, as well, is going to be brought up, and is going to be very comparable to all the other buildings.
Correct.
Okay? And then the same with the Longview Career and Technical Center, they are also being brought up to the same standards as all the other buildings.
That's correct.
All the buildings are going to get the same treatment. So can I ask one other question?
Sure.
So you said we're not necessarily going to do anything with the, the shop area, is that going to, any sprucing up or anything that it's going to get, or it's maybe not so much?
A little bit, I think you mentioned, there's some mechanical work over there to get that piping system that had frozen before, I think, sorted out, some of the new doors. Those, those spaces are pretty industrial, I mean, it's bare concrete floors, you know, exposed piping, exposed ceilings, there's not a lot to do there. If we tried to repaint or anything like that, it would probably cost five times more to move everything out than it would cost to paint, so we're trying to be a little bit prudent over there.
Understood, but it'll, I guess.
And their focus is primarily on the functionality of that area, and, you know, the doors will add to that, some of the mechanical systems updates will add to that, and then actually just the actual materials that they use are really more of their focus, rather than some of the aesthetics that we would have in some of our other learning areas.
And I, I believe we recently were able to buy.
We did.
Some equipment.
Yes, thanks to a very generous grant from the Margaret Dun, Margaret Dunning Foundation.
Yep, as long as they have heat and power, they're pretty happy.
And we, there's a classroom that separates those, that's getting a typical classroom setup, so it will be like a teaching classroom.
Okay.
So new ceiling tile, new finishes in there as well. You know, it's taken some abuse over the years, obviously, but it's not, it's, it's not like a, a brand-new paint, paint job, but it, there are some things, as, as we've stated, that it's just not the same exactly.
Right, but it's going to get this stuff and get, make sure that it's all this kind of electrical, mechanical, all that is, is functioning and all.
Well, it is a shop room, so you don't want to make it too nice, they're going to dirty it up anyway.
Paint and stuff, but at least, you know, the heating and cooling, or whatever they do, and I think the doors will make a huge difference, and.
For sure.
That'll be really nice, so thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? I think that's it.
Appreciate the board accommodating us and having a special meeting tonight, we don't like to ask for them, but it isn't absolutely necessary, but we do appreciate your time, and sorry to keep you so late.
We definitely appreciate you two coming out, and also been shedding for Phil, who is not feeling well this evening, I, I hear, so we really appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Burden?
Includes building site?
Includes it.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, both of you, for joining us.
You're welcome.
And for all of the years of work, it's, it's really surreal, sitting here saying that we're, we're looking at the last year of this. Thank you very much for, for all the work you've done for the school district and finishing it out so strongly, it's, it's a pleasure knowing that we're coming into this, even with budgets, at the very beginning, you told us, this is what budgets are going to do, looking at, at the, the climate in Metro Detroit, and you were spot-on right, but you also guided us very well to making sure that we had money set aside for when it was needed, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Item 4, Finance Committee. Mrs. Bonnefield, do you have any items?
I do not.
Mrs. Okus?
I do not.
Okay. Next item is Policy, I do not have any items for the Policy Committee, Mrs. Okus, we're set with Policy for the moment?
We are, we covered a number this evening, so I think we're all set.
Yes.
Policy got its cheer. The next item on the agenda is Item 6, Curriculum Committee. Mrs. Jarvis, do you have anything for this evening?
I do not.
Okay. Mrs. Okus?
I do not.
Okay. Number 7, Legislative, Mrs. Bradford.
I do not, as of this point.
But there's always stuff we could talk about.
There's always something.
There's nothing on the agenda for the evening.
Yes, I'm looking into things, I'm always, I'm learning how to navigate that website, since I'm, I'm a new committee chairperson, so I'm navigating that Michigan website, and it's, there's a lot on there.
There is.
So I'll, I'll bring, bring you up to speed on the next meeting.
Thank you, and Mrs. Okus, you don't have anything for Legislative?
We do not have any items, thank you.
Personnel Committee, Mrs. Frank? Nothing, nothing, all righty. That brings us to the end of our agenda for our committee at the whole meeting, and we will see you at our next meeting next week, actually, next week, next week, we're, we're off.
We're off next week for Presidents' Day, and we will be back in session at 6:15 on February 26th for a voting meeting on these items, followed by a study session that will be upstairs in Conference Room A.
Sounds great. Thank you very much, we are now adjourned.